We'll call this meeting of the Craven County Board of Commissioners regular session for Monday, December the 4th, 2023 to order. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Present.
Chairman Jones?
Here. Thank you. Just note this evening Commissioner Mark is with us remotely, so all votes that are cast this evening will have to be by roll call. And if I fail to do that, please don't mind speaking up and let me know. Mr. Attorney also. Ladies and gentlemen, at this time we're going to ask if you will to let us stand together. Our county attorney, Mr. Grady, is going to lead us in prayer. And I ask you to remain standing for the pledge to the American flag.
Lord our God, you have shared us your glory. You have redeemed your people by the revelation of your eternal word. Let your light now shine within us. Guide us, that we may be led through the darkness bound in this world, to the radiant joy of your presence, both now and forever. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, into the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We welcome each of you here this evening, and to those that may be viewing online, we welcome you. I do ask for those in attendance, if you will, please let us make sure our phones are on silence, so they wouldn't disrupt this meeting. We would appreciate that. Commissioners, you have before you your agendas. Are there any agenda items that you desire to pull or add to tonight's agenda?
I move that we approve this agenda.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve. The agenda, is there any discussion on the motion? Here, none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes, thank you. Next item is the petition of citizens for agenda topics. Ms. Vice Chair, we have anyone signed up?
We do have. Mr. Albert Lester.
Okay. Good evening. And as you know, usually we give three minutes. We do have a timekeeper. And if you don't mind, just state your name again for the record and your address. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners, Department Heads, and citizens of Craven County. My name is Albert Lester. I live at 706 Badger Lane in Havelock, North Carolina. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of a DARE program that's going to effect. And DARE program works. There's no doubt in my mind that it works. I was a DARE officer approximately seven, eight years. We have young citizens come up to me and tell me I was their DARE officer. Havelock had a DARE officer. Same thing with that officer. We cannot afford to let DARE go to the sideline again. We, for some reason unknown, they stopped funding it. But the DARE program works. And I want to compliment the Sheriff for bringing it back. In two or three years, we're going to see results from his officers, his deputies out there teaching DARE. DARE in the 5th grade, 7th grade. If we could get DARE in all levels of schooling, 5th, 7th, and 9th, I think we can put a little dent in this program and some of the things that's going on in the school and in the home. That's my belief. And I want to commend Sheriff Hughes for the outstanding job he's doing as our Sheriff in Craven County. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Vice Chair, is there any other?
No, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Next item is the consent agenda. Commissioners, there are many things on the consent agenda. You have the minutes of the November 20th regular session, and also the November 20th reconvene session, tax releases and refunds. You have the CARCS, Adoption of the Updated Drug and Alcohol Testing Policy. Under the Sheriff's Office, you have a donation check for a budget amendment. Under the Sheriff's Office, you have the DARE program donation check, budget amendment. Under the Sheriff, you have a retiree firearm. Also, you have the Sheriff's Bond. And then H is the elections for donated voting booths. Are there any consent agenda items that you desire to pull tonight? Here, no one desiring to pull anything from the consent agenda. Do I have a motion that we approve it?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion on the motion?
I just had a comment on the DARE program. Just went through a DARE graduation recently, and I just want to concur with Mr. Lester. Just think it's an amazing thing you see. I don't know what name, school or district, but even kids that in middle school have drug issues. And having one kid go through the program and change that is a remarkable thing to see.
Thank you, sir. Any other discussion on the motion? Here, none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes, thank you. Motion passed. Item three is the reorganization of the board. As always, each year, we do have the reorganization of this board, and we allow the, ask the county attorney, if he will, to conduct the election of chair. And also tonight, I would ask him to conduct the election of vice chair.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. And we'll jump in. The process is outlined in your agenda. But let me summarize it briefly. I will open the floor for nominations, and then you can place a commissioner and nomination for the chairmanship by, you know, saying the last name, or saying Commissioner such and such, or by motion. When it's apparent all the nominations are made, I will ask for a motion and second to close the nominations, and then we'll vote on the nominations. Depending on how many nominations we have, will impact how we vote slightly, so we'll go over that when we get there. And if it's okay with you, Mr. Chairman, and Commissioners, we'll jump in on that process. With that said, I will open the floor for nomination for the position of Chair of the Craven County Board of Commissioners.
I nominate Jason Jones for Chair.
Are there any further nominations? I would entertain a motion that the nominations be closed.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye, but we need a roll call clerk by the clerk.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
And since there's only one nomination, I will ask your clerk for the roll call vote. And if you vote yes, that is a vote to make Chairman Jones your chair for the coming year. Okay? Madam Clerk, if you will, call the roll.
Okay. Commissioner Mark?
Jason Jones.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Congratulations, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Now, you want to have the oath?
Will you, Jason Jones, solemnly and sincerely swear that you will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as Chairman of the Craven County Board of Commissioners?
I will.
Will you, Jason Jones, faithfully and truly, for the best of your skill and ability, execute the duties of the office of Chairman of the Craven County Board of Commissioners, so help you God?
I will.
St. John's Church.
Congratulations, Chairman.
Sir.
All right, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we'll move on to the election of the vice chair. We'll follow the same process if that meets with your approval. With that, I will open the floor for nominations for the position of vice chair.
I nominate Denny Booker.
Mr. Booker is nominated. Are there any further nominations? I would ask for a motion to close the nominations.
So moved.
And a second.
We had a second. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Sure. Commissioner Mark?
Commissioner Booker.
We're voting to close the nominations right now.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Close the nominations.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
We have Mr. Booker in nomination for the position of vice chair for the Craven County Board of Commissioners. I would ask the clerk to call the roll, and a yes vote will be a vote for Commissioner Booker. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Mark?
Commissioner Booker.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Will you, Denny, solemnly and sincerely swear that you will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as vice chairman of the Craven County Board of Commissioners?
I will.
Will you, Denny Booker, faithfully and truly, for the best of your skill and ability, execute the duties of the office of vice chairman of the Craven County Board of Commissioners, so help you God?
I will. Thank you.
It's your secret.
Vice Chair Booker, do you want to make any comment? No, I don't. Thank you. Well, I will say, I thank my colleagues for your confidence once again. We look forward to working with each of you in this upcoming year. Item four under the agenda tonight is the establishment of the 2024 meeting dates, times, and locations. Commissioners, you have those before you of our meeting dates, the agenda deadline, and the budget amendments to finance. Here, no objection to the list of the meeting dates, times, and locations. Do I have a motion that we would approve?
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Here, none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Item five is the consideration of appointments to Commissioners, to boards, and committees. I would ask the board, if you will, allow to let us defer consideration of that this evening, and we will have, individually have some conversations. I will have those with you. Here, no objection? Here, none? We will defer consideration. Thank you. Item six, as departmental matters. The first item we have is under planning. Have Mr. Chad Strong, our Planning Director, for Stream Flow Rehabilitation Assistance Program Budget Amendment. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. On our first item here, we have a budget amendment for, a rollover budget amendment from last fiscal year. Planning staff request that the Board of Commissioners approve the attached rollover budget amendment in the amount of $388,939 for the strap grant funds. Work for this project has not been completed as of last fiscal year. We would like to request these funds be rolled over into our current fiscal year. We are roughly 80% complete with this project. Just as a reminder, these funds are to remove stream debris from 2.96 mile segment of Swift Creek between Butler Ford Road and NC Highway 118. Strap funds are intended to reduce flooding by removing stream debris across the state's waterways through proactive efforts rather than reactive efforts following storm events.
Okay, Commissioners, you got any questions for Mr. Strong? All right, here, no questions. There'll be four years of the budget amendment to roll over $388,939 into the 2024 fiscal year. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
A motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Here, none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
All right, and then B?
All right. All right. Craven County has been officially notified that we will receive $200,000 from the North Carolina Department of Justice Environmental Enhancement Grant Program. These funds will be used to install 300 feet of marsh seal and living shoreline at the Highway 1770 bridge abutment off ramps. And I'm going to show you some pictures here in just a minute. Located near the Bridgepoint Marina in downtown New Bern. The proposed project was strategically selected to protect the Highway 1770 bridge abutment off ramp from sustaining future damages like what we saw in the aftermath of Hurricane Florence. In addition to protecting the roadway, this living shoreline will also protect an eight-inch waterline that provides water to large portions of the surrounding community. So here, from this image here, you can see downtown New Bern to your right. This is coming, like you're coming over from Bridgeton. You've got Bridgepoint Hotel, and the outback is to the left there. And this is the shoreline we're looking to stabilize. Basically, what happened during Hurricane Florence is you had a strong northeast wind that came across the river, almost of a fetch of a little less than two miles. So the waves that impacted this shoreline here undercut a lot of the road bed here, and also came very close to our eight-inch waterline up at the intersection. You can see the new asphalt on the off ramp here from that storm damage. So this is just a side-by-side right after Hurricane Florence on your left, 2018. You can see where they had the road shut off and the barricades up. That was closed for some time, coming in from that direction. And then, once it was repaired, about six months later, I think it was fully operational, 2019, you can see where the new asphalt is being reestablished at that location. Just to, right there is where the living shoreline will be installed. So, just to give you an aerial view here of this location, and the waterline. The waterline comes up and makes a turn at that vicinity, head back to James City, and then it also goes back and it serves the community of Bryce's Creek. So two large populated areas that are served by that looping of that waterline. So I spoke a little earlier about the wind direction from the northeast and the open water exposure that you have at this location, just shy of two miles. That's a lot of energy. A lot of energy that's coming at that location, just 45, 50 mile per hour winds coming across that, cause some wave damage and run-up there. So just to give you an idea what happened after Hurricane Florence. All right, so everybody's asking, well, what exactly is a living shoreline? Living shoreline is a protected stabilized coastal edge made of natural materials such as plants, sand, rock. Unlike a concrete seawall or other hard structure which impedes growth of plants and animals, living shorelines grow over time. So at this location, about 15 yards, we'll go offshore and put a, what they call a breakwater in. This breakwater is pretty much made of granite, where it's very hard to move. We may even put some anchoring on that granite. So what happens at mean high tide, and over there, it's going to be a wind tide, when water gets up and over that breakwater, it deposits sand and sediment, and then eventually a bigger beach will grow and cause a protection measure for that whole area. So this is a living shoreline example. Just say one, the marsh seal was installed here. Then after that sediment's deposited, and then you have the plants that establish growth, that's just how much more buffer area that you're going to have to protect that waterline and also the road bed. So just to reorient us back, just imagine that picture you just saw, and a living shoreline at this location. And what I'm here tonight to ask, in order to move forward with the grant, planning staff requests approval of the execution of the memorandum of understanding with the Department of Justice, and approve the project budget amendment.
All right, questions for Mr. Strong? Commissioner Howard?
Up to $200,000, what will be the total budget upon completion? Or will $200,000 cover this?
Yeah, well, we estimate it at about $227,000. That's what we put in our grant application, but we're going to readjust the scope of the project to taper it back, just so that we can do it within the amount of money that the state provided us.
Is there any money allocated for educating the public, or is that necessary? I'm just wondering.
If we have cost savings within the project, I would, I'll probably work with the Attorney General's Office to see if that would be appropriate.
Well, great job. That's a great project. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Mitchell?
Two questions, Chad. The first is, what is the timeframe to complete the breakwater? The rock, the granite, whatever, to get that in? So from, so that's question number one. And question number two is, from the time of the installation of the actual breakwater to maturity, what is the ballpark? Two years, five years, along with that roughly take?
And you know, that, I'll say that kind of depends, but what we're going to try to do is put that breakwater in in the next six months. I think two years, you'll start seeing a good amount of accretion of land behind that breakwater. Five years depends on the establishment of the wetland species that take effect behind that marsh seal. I think you'll see pretty good maturity within five years.
Thank you.
Additional questions?
I don't have any questions. I'm really excited to actually watch this one. There's been two living shorelines, one completed in my district, and one in work in my district, and discussions on a third one as well. So I've been reading about these living shorelines for a while, and it's really, really hard to fight Mother Nature, okay? But I believe that this project is one way where we can work with Mother Nature, rather than fight Mother Nature, because she's going to do what she's going to do. So this is one way for us to work with her, and I think it's an excellent project, and I love the fact that you brought the budget down $29,000.
We'll make it work.
All right, any other questions? All right, here, no other questions. We're asked to execute the memorandum of understanding, approve the project budget amendment in the amount of $200,000. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Sorry.
We have a motion and a second from this end of the table. Any discussion on the motion?
We'd both like it.
Here, none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Thank you, Chad. Appreciate what you do, buddy. All right, next, item seven is social services. We have Mr. Jeffrey Merritt with a budget amendment. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners, County Managers. And we bring before you an amendment to amend our budget, add more funds for training for our child welfare staff, to be able to support them to go to the needed training in order to meet the mandates of the training, and also training that is required before any new hires without any prior child welfare experience who's had this training. They need that before they can perform their duties. I'll be, I've given some information here in the justification. I'll be happy to answer any other questions.
All right. We have any questions from the board? Jack, where this $30,000 come right out of fund balances, okay? All righty, any additional questions?
Elaborate. I don't know if this is one of those funds where we'll actually get some of it back.
We will. We should get about 50% of these funds back. Of course, with our budget, you have to spend it before you get it back.
All right. The request is to approve the budget amendment in the amount of $30,000 for travel and training in the child welfare division.
I make a motion to approve the budget amendment of $30,000.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I have a second? Okay, a second for Commissioner Smith. Any discussion on the motion? Here, none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. And Jeff, while you're here, if you don't mind, just give us a brief update on Medicaid expansion, what you're experiencing, if you don't mind.
Well, it's very early. You know, Friday was the first official day, so we didn't see the doors being busted down, really usual traffic. That was also the beginning of our low-income energy assistance program with households with individuals aged six-year-old. But, you know, we are continuing to get training on the new eligibility rules, even though it started. I think our supervisors even had some training this week. So that is concerning to us that the training wasn't done beforehand. There's been a lot of back and forth with the manual changes, but our staff are trying to adjust, and they're working hard and upbeat on these changes and what it'll mean for the citizens of Craven County. Some good things that are happening is that the state was able to get those individuals moved from that one Medicaid program to the, in other, to the Medicaid expansion program where they'll be eligible for more benefits. So that went very smoothly. We were happy with that, at least it has so far. And also, you know, they have made some manual changes, which makes it easier for us to, where we'll be able to find some information that the manual has continued to stay the same. So we are, you know, moving forward, and, you know, as things come about, we try to adjust and continue to work hard to, you know, serve the citizens of Craven County. We, you know, do expect our applications to increase, but, you know, with such a short time period, it's hard to, you know, just go on a two-day timeframe. But I would just encourage, I will try to put that information in my monthly report that I give you. I would expect to see those numbers, even for November, that I will report to you, you know, next month, in December, to be higher than the previous years, because we are seeing a more increase, especially from the hospital and applications and other medical providers. So we're going to start looking at our numbers and our data, and we're reporting those out as you can see the differences in the access, in access of our programs, through applications and things such as that.
Any questions for Mr. Merritt?
Since we have so many people that's going to need training in the next coming time, year or so, is there a possibility to have the person that's doing the training to come to New Bern, since we have facilities that they could use, you know, for overnight stay and that kind of thing? Is there any possibility to have the conference folk, whoever's doing the leadership part of this, to come to New Bern, which was less than our expense?
I will say, if you're talking for child welfare and for Medicaid expansion, we do offer our room for that. One of the challenges we have in child welfare is that they need that room for seven straight weeks.
Well, I'm thinking about the public...
For Medicaid expansion?
Yes. I'm thinking about using large numbers at one time, and we could maybe put them in the convention center. See, we wouldn't have to have our folk to be staffed anywhere. They could be at home. When they go off to be trained, they have to have a hotel fee. And it would be nice if we could have other folk to come to New Bern at some point so that we would be getting, receiving those monies rather than spending great funds, like great numbers of funds.
Sure, yes. And I will communicate if the state does offer and they're asking for training sites, I will work with the county manager and try to find a location. If it can't be in our building, but maybe have something that we can offer to bring those individuals here so they can have those hotel dollars and have those, where they spend meals and maybe come around here and shop and bring some revenue to our county. Yes.
That was my question.
I would, I definitely will do that if they are looking to do training in person and they're looking for a large site.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Now, do you want to, before you leave, you want to recognize your two assistants that you have with you this evening?
Yeah, my mom has a doctor's appointment, so they're stuck with dad tonight. So, yeah, they're here learning about government, so.
All right, welcome. We're glad to have you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate you. Looks like he's about ready to go to sleep. The next item, item eight, is facilities. We have the approval of the DSS Expansion Project Ordinance Amendment and related budget amendment. Ms. Jean Hodges, good evening, sir.
Good evening, Board. So since July of 2022, Craven County staff has been working with the design team of Oakley Callier Architects to develop an expansion project for the Department of Social Services building located at 2818 News Boulevard. In February 2023, the Board of Commissioners selected Barnhill Contracting Company as a construction manager at risk for this project. To date, $1,068,139 has been budgeted for this project. This budget amount includes the total architect and engineering fees based on the initial estimate of the construction costs and the pre-construction proposal fee of Barnhill Contracting Company. Barnhill prepared bid packages and opened bids on November 7th and November 15th. There was strong contract participation, which resulted in favorable bids. After all scope of work reviews were completed, the final construction cost related to this project totaled $7,286,961. Additionally, there are construction-related items that are part of Craven County's responsibility. These are related to network connectivity, cameras, access control, landscaping, and independent testing. These are categorized as other than general construction in the project. Those costs totaled $320,000. An estimate for furniture fixtures and equipment at $710,552, and a 5% project contingency of $364,348 are also included. All those numbers add up to $8,681,861. The funding for this project was previously identified through the use of the revenue replacement formula for local governments under the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA. Using these guidelines, Craven County has $9,750,000 to apply to this project. The request is for the Board of Commissioners to approve the project ordinance amendment and the related budget amendment in the amount of $8,681,861, and to authorize staff to execute any agreements related to the construction of the expansion for the DSS building.
Okay, Commissioners, you have any questions for Mr. Hodges?
I have one.
Commissioner Hunt?
So if you stay under the budget that far, what happens to the rest of the money that was awarded?
So it's $975,000. So what we, long story short, to get to your balance, that's the furniture, fixtures, and equipment. That's an estimate right now. When we get the final, you know, finally get the layout set up and figure out who's sitting where inside the building, get the final number on the furniture, there'll probably be another amendment that's going to actually add to that number.
All right, additional questions? All right, here are none. We do have before us asking that we approve the project ordinance amendment, the budget amendment, and authorize staff to execute agreements related to the construction of the expansion of the DSS building. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion. A second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Here are none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you, Jean. All right, item nine, we have appointments. We have before us pending, current, and upcoming. We do have a list of pending or any nominations for any pending. Here are none. We will now move to current. The first one we have is consideration of three citizens to serve on the Craven County Health Board. Commissioners, I'm going to ask you tonight, if you would, to let's defer consideration of this until our next meeting. Would there be any objection to that?
For all of the appointments?
For all of, not for all on the Health Board, under the Health Board. Any objection?
No.
Here are no objection. We would defer consideration in the next meeting. The next item then would be under current, the Fireman's Relief Fund, Board of Trustees. You have for Township 8 West New Bern, Mr. Dan Murphy. Commissioner Mitchell?
I would nominate him.
Okay, we have a nomination of Mr. Murphy. Are there additional nominations from the floor? Here are none. We will accept by acclamation. Next would be the Fire Tax Commissioners Board for Township 3, Fort Bonville, Mr. Jason Simpson. Commissioners, I would nominate him and ask him to be considered. Are there additional nominations? Here are none. We will accept Mr. Simpson by acclamation. Next, you have the Havelock Craven County Library Board. There are two seats here. You have Mr. Joe Metta. He is eligible for reappointment.
I would recommend reappointment, absolutely.
Okay, we have the nomination of Mr. Metta. Are there additional nominations? Here are none. We will accept Mr. Metta's by acclamation. And then Ms. Drake is ineligible for reappointment. You do have the applicant of Kathleen Howard who seeks appointment.
I recommend Kathy Howard to the Havelock Library Board.
Okay, we have the nomination of Ms. Kathleen Howard. Are there additional nominations? Here are none. We will accept her by acclamation. Are there any other current appointments to consider tonight, Commissioners, that may have been forgotten? Here are none. You see the upcoming terms expiring in December that will be before us. Please take note of that. Any other appointments? All right, here are none. We will next move to item 10, the County Attorney's Report. Mr. Gray. Okay, thank you, sir. All right, the next item would be the petition of citizens for general topics. Mr. Vice Chair? We have none. We have no one that's signed up to speak, no one in the audience that failed to sign up, okay? Next item would be the County Manager's Report. Mr. Vice. Okay, thank you, sir. Commissioners' report. Commissioner Mark, we will start with you, if you would allow us.
I have nothing to report, sir.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Howard?
No report. I'll say congrats to Ms. Dacey, who's in the audience now, for being elected Chairman of the Board of Education. Congratulations.
Thank you. Commissioner Mitchell?
Very little, other than I hope everyone had a lovely Thanksgiving and had many blessings to count and have a safe and happy holiday season.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
I too would like to congratulate Dacey. She is Chair of one of the committees that I serve already, and we're excited about having her as Chair of the Board of Education. Also, I'd like to share with you that I did participate in the New Bern Christmas Parade on Saturday. It was a lot of fun, very nice parade.
Thank you. Commissioner Hunt?
I have a couple of things.
Okay.
I'm very pleased to report that the Shelter Pet Day proclamation and the Home for the Holidays event was a huge success. I'd like to extend many thanks to go out to Joanna Kloster, Dr. Ossler and her team, as well as the Sheriff's Department Craven County Animal Control Agents for doing an excellent job. I'd like to let everyone know that, in fact, 15 dogs, 13 cats, two pigs, two rabbits, and one chicken, 33 animals in total found their forever home in the last three days, in those three-day period. I call this a big win for Craven County. I'd also like to send congratulations to the Havelock Pregnancy Resource Center for their grand reopening in Havelock. They are now located on Highway West. They currently have both women and men to counsel future parents and parents that may be struggling with their young families. They also provide items there that babies and young children need right there at the facility. In addition, they offer onsite sonography for the new moms. Personally, I am honored to be friends with this loving and very hard-working group of volunteers. This is a huge win, not just for Havelock, but I would say for all of Craven County because anyone in need is absolutely welcome to go there and get services that they provide. Lastly, as I complete my first year on this board, I want to thank Craven County Jack Fight. I wanted to thank all of Craven County employees for supporting me and being patient with me. And I want to thank this board, too. It's been a great year. It's been a roller coaster, and I like it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, Commissioners, I do want to, again, Commissioner Howard's already acknowledged the new Chairman of the Board of Education, Ms. Dacey. We look forward to working with you. Vice Chair and myself, you know, we will be extending the invitation to you and the new chair to come and meet with us. So we look forward to our conversations this upcoming year. And again, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to serve you and look forward to working with each of you. We're very blessed to have the board we have and to be a part of this great county, and I thank the Lord for that. All right, Commissioners, anything else to bring before the board tonight? Here are none. Do I have a motion that we would adjourn?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second from Commissioner Smith. Here are no discussion. Madam Clerk, if you will, call the roll.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.